I don't see David yet.
Yeah, let's give him a minute.
So.
We got. There's Jeff. We got Hershey yet?
No Hershey, no David.
Okay, let's wait. Okay. Well, let's see. Let's get, let's give it till five after, five after.
Okay.
Yo, why don't, Bill?
Yes.
Why, why don't you have Amy give David a call if he's not on?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you to do that. Amy, can you get a cell number?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll email Hershey.
Oh, wait, here's Hershey.
Hershey. Welcome. There she is.
Sorry, sorry, I'm late.
You're not, you're not the last one. We're still waiting for her.
Really? Okay. As usual, I couldn't, I couldn't find it. I couldn't get it to work and I now had to go to the town website. That's okay, I got it to download.
Good.
Oh my god.
Take a deep breath.
A really long day ago. Alright.
Not over yet.
Exactly. Hey, Betsy, did you see on, I think the Southport Bolden, someone's looking for a companion horse for a horse they're getting?
No.
That might be a good life for Lorenzo. That's like the perfect life for a horse that nobody wants to ride anymore. So you might. Let me figure out where I saw it and try to forward it to you.
Okay, thanks.
It must, it must have been Facebook. I don't know where else I would have seen it. But it wasn't the town thing. It was a friend of Lee's.
Okay, Bill, he didn't answer. I'll try him again in a minute.
Okay, well, we can get started. We, the, the first thing on our agenda today is the public hearing for the project off of Mountain Road, the Meadow Woods East and West. I see Dana Libby is with us. We had a write-up of, from David what the issues are here. We heard this, gosh, almost a month ago, I think, because we skipped one meeting for the, for the hearing. So Dana, if you'd like to give a brief presentation of your project, and then we can continue with any questions that might, might exist.
Sure. I'm gonna screen share the plan. So my name's Dana Libby from Corner Post Lanta Bank, representing August Realty, who was proposing two minus subdivision, one on each side of Mountain Road, East and West, a four lot on the east and a two lot on the, on the west. This, the subdivisions are all pretty much surrounded by the Mount Agamemnonus Conservation Area. So the east side. We had the wetlands mapped, and as a result of the wetlands mapping, there was determined that there were two vernacular pools, which are the pink areas, the wetlands, the blue areas. And in our letter to Fish and Wildlife, it was disclosed that we also had some turtle sightings within the project. So these are the, that, these are the red circles. As part of Fish and Wildlife's review of the proposed lotting, they required a 250-foot buffer to go around the vernaculars and the associated wetland. So that encroached mostly on this subdivision, and that's this blue line around here. So the buffer area that's within the lot, proposed lots, is the dark green area. We, we came up with a proposed lot design for small footprints for house, home construction and, and lawns, etc., within the buffer, sent it off to Fish and Wildlife. They reviewed this plan and approved it, and as part of their review, sent us a, a listing of restrictions and for the buffer, and those restrictions are listed verbatim from their document as Note 24 on the plan. Also, as part of their recommendation, they did not want any clearing of, of the lots that are within the buffer area during, outside of the winter months. So the clearing for these three lots will have to take place during winter months. Soil testing has been completed on lots. They all pass soil tests. We've shown the well exclusion areas on all of the lots and placed wells outside of those areas. The houses and driveways that are shown here on are, are conceptual, but these small footprint areas that are going to be developed are pretty limited in where you can put the houses anyways. And we go off to the west side. There is two lots here, pretty much standard lots, not much in the way of impacts. Very minimal impact from the buffer. There's a one wet, couple small wetlands on the property. None of the wetlands on either side are being impacted. And once again, these have been soil tested and we're showing well exclusion areas. Both projects are going to have a 50-foot buffer across the front of the lots. Both, both subdivisions will utilize overhead utilities for the access to the homes. This road was recently rebuilt and now is paved. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. So will you take any questions?
Great, so I'll, we'll run all the questions. I asked people to, first of all, okay. If, we'll start with the general public if they have questions, and then we'll go to the board members. And so this is the public hearing portion of the project. Does anyone that's listening tonight have a question or comment regarding the subdivision? Well, that's pretty easy. Going once. Oh, wait, I see Liz Segali.
Close, Liz is fine, thank you.
I'm sorry?
Liz, yep.
Yeah, you have a comment or a question?
When you, when you say east-west meadows and we're referencing this as a subdivision, I expect that there will not be any signs noting said subdivision. Is that accurate?
That's correct. There will be, there'll be no development signs.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Liz, I forgot to mention, if you, if you speak, you should, you need to indicate where, where you reside.
90 Mountain Road.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I see David Galbraith has joined us. Welcome, David.
Welcome, or thank you. I apologize for being late. I had technical difficulties on my end.
Well, you know, these, these systems, they all work until they don't. Okay, alright, then. Any comments or questions from board members?
I've got someone, you're ready.
Go ahead.
Who was a wetland scientist that delineated the wetlands?
Mark Hampton.
Okay, the turtle sighting, what impact does that have on the project?
Well, it, it, Fish and Wildlife has restricted the development of these lots. All four of the lots on the east side, the dark green buffer is highly restricted as to what can happen, take place. Basically, nothing can take place within that buffer area. All those restrictions are listed on Note 24. And, and itemize what the landowner can and can't do within that buffer area.
And that's because of the turtle sightings?
That's, that's correct. They're trying to protect the habitat of the turtles. These sightings took place sometime in the past. It's not something that was recently seen. The biologist that we walked the site, I think early October, and based on his conversation, the turtles had already gone on the ground and not to be seen till spring.
So how do they document that there's been a turtle sighting?
Somebody physically saw a turtle and they apparently must have GPS the location. That's what these dots, these red circles indicate.
And what type of turtles?
Blanding's turtle and spotted turtle, which are the pitches up top. And according to Fish and Wildlife, this is prime habitat for a ribbon snake as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay, then with that, I'll close the public hearing on, on this subdivision, and we'll take it up as a business item in our regular meeting. Okay, thank you Dana.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so we'll start the the regular meeting for May 5. I'll, I'll take a roll just for the record, and I'll start with Jeff Minahan.
Here.
Okay, Hershey.
Here.
Betsy Randall. He's here, and Manago.
Here.
Who's using Amy's address. So that's not really Amy Iger. That's Manago. And I'm here. So that's five. Good. We're all here. Great. Okay. The, we have minutes of April 7, and I don't know that we, we don't have April 21 yet, do we, Amy?
Yes, I sent them both.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, let's, let's do them one by one. So April 7. I've got that up. The regular meeting on April 7. Does anyone have any comments or corrections on those minutes? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes.
I move we accept the minutes. April 7.
Okay, so Hershey moves and Manley seconds. All in favor, I'll, I'll do it by a show of hands. Raise your hand if you're good with the minutes. One, two, three, four, five. I bet you okay?
I wasn't here.
Oh, I'm sorry, you weren't there. So, yeah, she was, she was not, she was not present. So the four people who are here attending that voted in the affirmative. So they're, they're, they're approved. Thank you. Okay. Would you mind putting up the, the April 21 minutes, Amy?
Sure. Give me a moment.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Alright. Where'd they go?
There we go. So we, we only had me, Hershey, and Jeff as members present. And we're all here, so we can approve them, if we're okay with them. Does anybody have any comments or modifications to these minutes of Hershey and Jeff?
I'm good.
Okay, you wanna move to accept them?
I do. I move we accept the minutes from April 21st.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And Jeff seconds, that's great. Okay, so I'll, I'll call the roll to make it clear. Hershey?
Hi.
And Jeff?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that they, they're accepted. Great, thank you very much. Okay. Um. Does anybody have a, an item to speak on from the public at this time? Okay, everybody's listening. Fine. Okay. Okay, then we're gonna go to old business. I would suggest it with the concurrence of the board that we, we move the parent subdivision first, because I think that's gonna be quick, and Dana can go on his way unless he wants to listen to us for the rest of the night.
I appreciate that very much.
So David Galbraith wrote up a summary of the project, which pretty much matches what Dana Libby explained, and I don't know if you want to just quickly summarize what that was, David, and maybe focus on what actions we may or may not take tonight?
Well, right now, the the client is asking for final plan approval, and for the subdivision, that's actually two subdivisions, if you recall. East and west side of the road, but as, because of all the environmental things, we had them show us the original subdivision as both sides of the roadway. The only thing, and Dana and I have talked about it, is, and as has the board, that when we come for the final signing or recording it, the board approves the plans, we have to have two separate plans and record them separately, but basically they're, they have the identical conditions on it and things like that, and Dana's gonna do that. So apart from that, it was actually a pretty easy review as Dana did such a thorough job.
Yeah, okay. So are there any questions of the Mr. Libby tonight from the board regarding, nothing's changed since when we scheduled the hearing, but there is a question that occurred to board members between then and now?
Okay. I did go back and watch the meetings, and I was very happy with all the information.
Thank you, Betsy. So what we, what we could do tonight is grant preliminary subdivision approval, and that would allow the project to go to final subdivision approval stage, and and we could have draft conditions of approval and findings of fact if we're concurrent with the final review. And it seems logical to me that we would do that.
What's keeping us from just giving final this evening?
Because we need to get the draft conditions and findings of fact drafted. Is that right, David?
Correct.
So we, 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 we be getting ahead ourselves if did final, it's just a one more step and we'll be done.
Yeah.
I made a motion we give.
I was gonna say. Manley?
I make a motion, we give them preliminary approval.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, and Manley, if you would amend your motion to ask the, the David to draft conditions of approval and findings of fact concurrent with the next review of this?
You've heard it, David.
And Betsy, you wanna second that amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Great, alright. Any discussion?
Roberts rules.
Yeah, okay, so I'll, we'll take a vote on the motion, and I'll do a roll call. Jeff?
Hi.
Hershey?
Hi.
Betsy?
Hi.
Manley?
Hi.
I'm an I, so that's five. Okay, okay, well, Mr. Libby, I think we're all set, and we'll try to wrap this up next time.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Have a great night.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it should be renamed Blanding's Way or something after the turtles.
Spotted Blanding's or something like that.
Spotted, spotted turtle way, something, something, something a little more disaster. Ribbon snake sounds good, too.
Because I don't think it's gonna take a lot of time. With the board's concurrence, I'd like to take up number two before number one. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Just nod.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Okay, then, because it won't take much time. It's, I think, gonna be very straightforward. I think Sean Toby is here. There, Sean.
I'm here.
You wanna tell us what you've done since last time, and we can take up what we need to do?
Yep, yeah, I can do that. And also here tonight is Christian Lorando, the applicant. If there's any solar-related questions that are more detailed than, or on the electrical side. So since the last meeting, we kind of went back. We addressed some of the comments. We added a turnaround outside of the fence. So if someone does go down that road, they can turn around on this site without going into someone's driveway. We added a Knox box to the front of the site for fire department access to get in through the gate. We've had additional coordination with IFNW. This site as well, there are spotted turtles and landing turtles, landings turtles in the marsh area adjacent to the site. They have asked for a 250-foot buffer. There are portions of the site that have been cleared up to the 100-foot buffer, so it's disturbed already. So we're proposing 150-foot buffer, and then we'll provide mitigation as well. So they've agreed to let us do what we're gonna do, and then find an additional parcel somewhere else in town that's prime turtle habitat and put it into conservation at an eight-to-one ratio. So Christian has already found another piece up in the northern part of South Berwick. I believe it's 26 acres, and we're gonna start working with IFW to make sure that's a suitable habitat and get that into conservation.
John, when you say eight-to-one, can you explain to everybody what that means?
Yeah, so the area, if you look at sheet C3, and I can share a screen here.
Yeah, please.
So on sheet C3, so you can kind of see, this is the 100-foot buffer. This red is 150, and then this is a 250. So this area in the green and yellow, yellow is where it's already been disturbed and cut. Green are some areas where we would have to cut some trees. So these total impacts, I'd have to add them up, like, little over an acre maybe. So eight-to-one means that we would take eight acres and put that into conservation versus, you know, the one acre that we're impacting. And it's not a full direct impact. It's not like it's being paved and a building's going there. The turtles can still pass under the fence. They can still go under the panels in the grass area. So IFNW was appreciative of that, and then with the additional acreage in town for conservation, they were happy with that. So they've agreed to this layout here, and then we're still working out the conservation land as well.
Can I, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, sure.
Who, who cleared those, the acreage before approval?
It was cleared by the previous owner. So at that time, when there was no development proposed, there was no coordination with IFW required. That coordination's required because we're doing the stormwater permitting and the development itself. So, so they adhered to the 100-foot buffer, which was in place at the time just for cutting.
Yeah, I don't remember when it was. Sometime in the last several years, there was a we had a timbercut permit on the same property. And I don't know if this cutting was part of that or what, but the, the, it has been managed as a forested lot for some time.
Okay. Yeah, and I believe when it was cut, I mean, it was flagged and laid out from just walking the site. You could see some old flags out there. So I don't, you know, they didn't cut into any of the wetlands. They adhered to the 100-foot. So it's, it's, it hasn't damaged or done anything that's troublesome. So we'll.
And, and I guess my follow-up is, if you're gonna get some land to put it in conservation, who will be the stewards of that land in its conservation-ishness?
Yeah.
Conservation awacity, sorry.
That would be purchased. I believe Christian would purchase that, and BD Solar would own the land, and then it would be a permanent deed restriction that would be registered and recorded, so that it could never be developed. And then there'd be a series of conditions with that, you know, no cutting or certain stipulations that IFNW would like to see.
Well.
Okay.
Are you looking for any official action this evening from the board?
David Galbraith has given us a memo, and what they're seeking is determination of application completeness and the moving, and scheduling a public hearing with at the next time. That would be, you would have to move to call, call this application complete and move to schedule a public hearing.
I'd, I'd like to do that. They, they addressed the, the points that we asked them to do. Yeah. And before it's approved, I'd like to see this other land. All, all the paperwork done on that, the eight acres. And get their estate to approve their plan.
Okay, so if, if, if the motion is to call the application complete and to proceed to a public hearing, and then the other, yeah. If you can have that as a simple motion, that would be great.
That, that's, that's what it is. I'm just, I like to
Yeah, we'll get the other.
Everybody heads up what I'm thinking.
Yeah, good. Betsy, do you have a comment or?
Just in the, in the chat, Bill, I didn't know if you saw, there is a comment. And I didn't know if it had been.
Okay, well, there is questions about waterfowl and that kind of thing. Now, it's important to note that by finding this complete, there, there's, there's still development of the project that's gonna be done by the applicant, and they gotta go through preliminary approval and a final approval. So there's other things that can be developed. So if these other questions come up in the public hearing, or otherwise, they can be addressed by the applicant. So we're not, not approving the entire project. We're saying the application's complete, and it can move to the next stage. So that, the, we know, commonly when we go to completeness, that's all we're doing, and there's still lots of work to be done. That applies to some other things as well. So, okay, there's a motion by Manley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hershey. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call, vote. Hershey?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Betsy?
Hi.
Manley?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that's unanimous. Okay, so would you prefer the hearing at the next meeting, or you need time for that, Sean?
I think at this point, we could probably just roll right into that next meeting. I don't anticipate too many plan changes or anything from there. I think that'd be good.
And Amy and Joe, is there any problem getting the notices out for, what is this? So it's two weeks from tonight?
Yep, it'll be taken care of tomorrow.
Okay, so the hearing is scheduled for the two weeks from tonight, the 19th. Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Then let me get this up here. Okay, so three, two, one. So the next item of business is, is the MSP 20009 Providential LLC Five-Lot Subdivision on Bennett Lot Road. And so there's been we had some back and forth in the last meeting. There was some last-minute correspondence come from several parties, including interested butters. Jeff shared his back and forth with David regarding his questions about the comp plan and how that works. And we received a letter this afternoon from attorney. I'm thank, I'm pulling a blank, I'm sorry, for the applicant, and he's here this evening, too. So I'll, I'll, I'll summarize my understanding of where we are. And, and then I'll ask David to correct me. So we, 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 this process has taken a lot of turns. We took several, a couple of meetings to Uh, we took, like, several, a couple of meetings to explore, uh, whether or not, uh, a gonk with Brooke or another regulated, uh, water body crossed the, the, um, the site. Uh, as was originally identified by on the drawings, but it turns out that's not the case. And we don't have a resource protection setback that we thought we might have. And we settled that, uh, with Mike Morrison and Joe a couple of meetings ago, several meetings ago. So that got us back to, um, uh, the original proposal, uh, which, uh, in accordance with the way the regulations work, uh, on a body, a child, a property, uh, if, uh, a subdivision can either be a so-called cluster subdivision or a conventional subdivision. And the decision to do a cluster over a conventional is, uh, actually dictated by the board, not, and may, maybe preferred one way or the other by the applicant, but the board under the ordinance can, uh, direct the applicant in one direction or another, particularly towards the cluster. We have been through a lot of discussion about what the site can support for a conventional subdivision, which would include a road that connects over to Emery's Bridge Road. Uh, with a lot more, um, environmental impact, but could support five lots, five residential lots. The way the, uh, ordinance works, the cluster ordinance works, is that those five lots can be redistributed on the property. Uh, with some, uh, relief for the size of the lots and so forth to minimize the environmental impact of those lots on the property. Um, and, uh, uh, so there'd be, there's choices like, uh, leaving open space, less wetlands. If there's historic, uh, resources, you might do, do the layout to, uh, uh, respect those and so forth. Um, and so the applicant had, has put together a, uh, a cluster proposal. Uh, that, uh, has significantly less wetlands impact. The house lots are essentially on the same locations as they would be for the conventional, but a lot less road construction. And a whole lot less wetlands impact. Um, we, so the question is, right now in front of us, uh, because we haven't been able to reach a decision on the last couple of meetings because of, uh, board members being absent and so forth, is whether we, um, uh, accept the relocation of the lots to the cluster concept. If we do, then we can, uh, call the application complete and then they start the process. We talked about in the last one, all, all issues are not done at this point. We're looking at completeness of the plan. Based on the, uh, considerations, uh, for the cluster and other things. But the actual detailed, uh, finalization of the plan is yet to be done. So issues with or questions about any number of things can be, um, pursued, uh, as far as the preliminary and final approval of that plan. But the, the, um, uh, I, I feel that the decision, a decision needs to be made tonight. Uh, as to whether or not we can, we could, we endorse the cluster concept and find the application complete. We either do or we don't. But I think we need to, we need to move on this. And we have a lot of information, a lot of, a lot of points of view. Um, and, uh, uh, I, I would remind board members that, um, being board members, e, e, in my own world, I'll, I'll talk about that first. In my own world, I have all kinds of, uh, preferences and biases on, on land matters and other things. And some, sometimes they're relevant and sometimes they're not. And it's our job to look at the, uh, documents and to look at the ordinances and look at comprehensive plan and whatever else you might take into account. And, uh, i- i- in, act, act accordingly. And sometimes, uh, the, the, the personal, uh, preferences are, are, may not be a driver in your role as a planning board member. So I'll ju, I'll just make that statement.
Bill?
Yeah.
Do these need to be two different motions, one for the cluster and one for the application complete?
It could be the same.
Okay, well, I would like to move to deem the application complete as a cluster subdivision.
Okay.
I make them second it.
Motion made, uh, by Betsy Randall, seconded by, uh, Manley to call the application complete based on the cluster concept. Okay, any discussion? Okay, then I'm gonna take a, take a roll call vote. Hershey. You're muted. Hershey, you're muted, you gotta.
Okay, 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 okay. Uh, can I think about this a sec?
I'll, uh, like, uh, as long as it takes me to call the other roll, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right.
Yeah.
Uh, can I ask a point of order before we take a roll call?
Okay.
Cause I, I'm sort of with Betsy in that I, I think we have the option to move ahead with additional and move that into preliminary or accept the cluster, in which case then we would decide to move ahead. So I don't, I don't really understand why those can't be two separate motions.
Uh, well.
You're, you're saying either we move ahead as a cluster or we don't move ahead at all?
The motion is to move ahead with a cluster, call it complete. That's the motion. There's not, there's not another motion. We can do that.
Okay, then I vote no.
Okay. Jeff?
Um, so I, what was that for? I didn't understand that.
With the, the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Is to call the application complete based on the cluster concept.
Uh, I, I don't know.
Do you have to vote somehow? Oh, you voted no?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I actually didn't know, okay. Betsy?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
I'm yes. So the vote is three to two to move the project forward.
As a cluster.
Yes. Okay. Is there any, uh, uh, comment or discussion or offerings from, uh, Brian Nielsen from Atar or Matt Howell, the attorney for the project?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, or, or Pat Carroll, the owner, rep? Uh, well, he's muted, so.
I, I make a motion that we accept it as complete and move it for a public hearing.
Uh, no, we're not, we're not there yet. It's set.
Oh, we're not there yet?
No, we have to, they have to move ahead with, with a preliminary plan and preliminary and final. And we have lots of questions along for that. But this, this allows them to move ahead with a concept, uh, for the use of the property.
Okay, uh, so is there any other official action we can take then?
No, it's, uh, the, the ball's in their court to come back to us with, with the preliminary, uh, plan and, and follow the, the steps in the ordinance to, towards, uh, towards, uh, uh, final approval. Okay.
Uh, Bill?
Yes.
I would like to, if other planning board members are in favor of this, I would like to send to the town council or request to, um, review the, uh, our five districts ordinances and, um, potentially have a public hearing or get public input, uh, in terms of what they would like to see in our five, um, maybe changes that need to be made. Because obviously this has been a hot topic and although there were many, many, many and many good reasons that people had, ultimately our ordinances don't support that.
Right.
And I, I think that we, that we as a planning board and as town council and get the public's input, um, in terms of like the zoning for our five.
Okay, um, I, I can support that. That, that, that's a motion to recommend to the council that the zoning ordinance be reviewed back to R5. Is there a second to that motion?
I second, do we, I, I, and can I ask, do we need permission from the town council? We can.
Uh, no, we, we, we can do that, but I think, uh, uh, letting them know that.
Okay.
We, we, we'd like them to acknowledge and authorize us to do that. And.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
We could separately decide not to do it, to do it anyway if they don't authorize.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
You rebelled.
Yes, Manley.
Okay, so I think traditionally in the past, uh, when they're, basically what we're saying is we wanna take a look at a comprehensive plan in our five and see if, uh, we can update the zoning in reference that typically in the past, I think there's been a separate ward that actually does the comprehensive plan work.
Yeah, so you're absolutely right, Manley. And they, they set up committees. It's a big, big process. I think if I not put words in Betsy's mouth, but I think she, she, her focus is to, to look at the, specifically the R5 and, uh, you know, we, we would do this work, but if the, if the council, uh, you know, endorses it, that's fine. We could still do the work where go through the zoning ordinance. Go through the comprehensive plan. And, and if we feel that the, they, they don't jive a hundred percent, we could recommend, uh, changes to the zoning ordinance to make it jive more with the comprehensive plan. Revisions to the comprehensive plan are, that's another matter.
But, uh, Basically, if I understand what we're talking about is, uh, in the R5 district is to, uh, change the zoning ordinance or reflects, uh, the point of view of being more restrictive.
Right.
And the only problem I've got with that is when you've got your comprehensive plan, it's like a whole long process. Uh, you go through, you get your comprehensive plan and all the different members of the, um, public, including landowners, uh, weigh in. Uh, it seems like we're, by doing, going forward in the way we're doing with short circuit and that somewhat. Uh, I can remember when they was putting this in and it's kinda like a negotiated settlement. And what I mean by that is you've got the landowners who have rights. Uh, and what I'm saying about landowners, I'm talking about people that have more than a building lot. I'm talking about people that financially is going to affect significantly. And then plus you've got the, your everyday person who would like not to see, um, these other landowners use the property. So if we're going down that direction, I think there needs to be some type of widespread notification to everybody within the district that we're going down this road because it's somewhat out of the ordinary.
Ultimately, in a, in, in my opinion, the town is growing so fast that by the time the comprehensive plan is done, too much is going to have happened. And so I totally agree with you, Manley. I think that we need a lot of people's input, the people that live in R5, the people that live in town, town council, planning board. But right now, South Berwick is growing so fast, I just don't think we have the time to sit and wait for the comprehensive plan to get done.
And, and that's fine, but what I'm saying is if we're gonna address this one, um, one section, uh, it seems, and it seems like it could be significant, that somehow we need to get the word out to all the people in that zone, how drastically it's going to be affected.
Well, we don't know that yet.
Yeah, and I think the way, the way this would play out, and I understand a hundred percent what Manley's saying, cause the, the, we're, I think Betsy's suggesting that we're not rewriting the comprehensive plan. We're looking at the zoning in R5 and, um, 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 and examining what, whether changes are appropriate based on the existing comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Yeah, so. I'll just let me finish. I think, so if we, if we did that, we, we, we had two or three or four modifications to the ordinance regarding, uh, use of R5. That would go through a full public hearing process. We can advertise anywhere we want. That gets recommended or not to the town council and they do with it what they will. I think that's prob, that, that, the reason, uh, it'd be good for Betsy's motion to be, be as it is, is to ask the council to endorse this review. Cause if they don't endorse it, then it's not much point in doing it. Cause they, they, they're, it buck stops with them.
And I understand what Betsy's saying. The town is growing fast and I, and I'm concerned about that. Uh, but looking at the R district, the R5 district, I, am I wrong in saying that since I've been on a planning board, there's never been a subdivision in that district?
So we just approved one tonight up in Mountain Road.
That's in the R5?
Yeah.
And what are the ones since we've been on?
Uh, I, I'm not sure, but there, there, I, I'm not sure.
Okay, um, it doesn't make any difference. We can go ahead and look at, I'm just saying the town as a whole is under a lot of pressure, uh, in, in development. That particular district, I don't think is under as much pressure as the town as a whole. But that's all I've got to say. I've said enough. Um, let's move forward.
Yeah, well, that helped focus that what we were talking about. So the motion been made by Betsy and seconded by Hershey, uh, to, um, uh, seek the council endorsement for our review of the ordinance in R5. Is any more discussion? Then I'll call the roll. Jeff?
Hi.
Hi, Betsy, Hershey, sorry.
Hi.
Uh, Betsy?
Hi.
Manley?
Hi.
And I'm I, great. So we'll, we'll communicate, we'll ask, uh, David or, or Amy to communicate that to the council. There was a couple of counselors here present, I, I see, so. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, that, that's, uh, that's been a tough one. Um, um, going back to our, uh, uh, and thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Going back to, uh, our agenda, let's take a breather. Um, we, uh, we have two marijuana ordinances to make recommendations to the council on. Uh, the first one, uh, was the review of the medical marijuana storefront ordinance, which the, um, council put up more on. And, uh, uh, we're to and suggest any changes to it based on our experience of having lived with it for a year and a little bit more. The, the second piece is, uh, uh, unrelated but related, and that's the, the, the town, uh, council has asked us to review a draft ordinance regarding uh, medical cultivation facilities. And, uh, that takes, uh, a little more explanation. Um, we met with the town attorney, Phil Sossier, a month ago, uh, and he made a series of uh, uh, statements and, and, and told us some, some things we could do and, and with this ways we could approach this. I would suggest, cause it's easier, I think, that we look at the medical marijuana storefront ordinance first. Cause I think we can deal with that and, and get that, move that along, uh, and then, and then take up the other. Is, is that, is that okay with everybody?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Yep, then I'm gonna put up, uh, a annotated copy. Where am I here? Uh, 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 hang on. Where is it? Here it is. Okay. Uh, share my screen. Where my share screen? It's that one. Oh, that's not right. Let's try again. Bear with me here. Um, uh, we're not, how do I get out here now?
Oh, a turkey.
We are seeing chapter one forty, at least.
Okay, you do see it. Okay, thank you, Jeff. Has something else or everything, all set. It does work. Thank you very much.
I don't think that's when you annotated, Bill, is it?
It, it is.
Okay. Oh, there is, okay.
So this is the ordinance that we worked a year and a half ago on, or two years ago on now really, and was adopted in, uh, January two thousand twenty by the council. And, um, um, since it's been adopted, we have approved three storefronts. And there have been, uh, proposals that haven't gotten to the planning board yet for at least one or two more. And, um, uh, the ones that we have, there's, uh, two on Lower Main Street. One sort of a third of the way down across from Last Lock attacks. That's the, uh, and then one at the, at the lower end, um, across from Fogarty's. And then there was a third one that we recently adopted or had to approve, which was, uh, next to the funeral home on Main Street. Um, and, uh, they're in various stages of opening. Um, but here's, here's where we, where we, the ordinance as, as we adopted it, as was adopted in January two thousand twenty. Um, the, 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 this stuff, I didn't have comments on, but where we had problems, where I think we've had problems and it hasn't worked out as I understood it was going to work out. Um, was under, uh, separation from schools, uh, and, uh, separation of caregiver retail stores. Um, we adopted a five hundred foot setback from the lot line of a public or private school. Uh, and we all understood based on the conditions at the time, that the Seacoast Christian School uh, was there. And fi- we all understood that all of Main Street, the business block of Main Street would be excluded by, by this and farther away from schools and all that stuff. But the, the impact of this would be to not allow a, uh, medical storefront all the way to Young Street. And then the Seacoast Christian School became Flynn's Inn. And so the, the distance back, we, we reverted back to the, uh, uh, central school and, uh, it didn't get anywhere near Young Street. So, uh, we need, I think we should re, reevaluate that in terms of what, what, what we do and, and does what we want to do. I looked at a map this afternoon, uh, and if we're going to get, get, get all the way to Young Street, we'd have to extend it to seven hundred plus feet plus, there was a, um, um, a, a provision of this, that the distance would be measured from the property line of the school to the entrance of the caregiver store by ordinary course of travel. So many of us thought, not having comprehended the actual language, that it'd be a radius as a crow flies. And it's not. So if a, if a proposal comes in, you, you, you're, you're to walk down the sidewalks that you would walk on to get there, and that's, uh, not accurate, I don't think, and it's not probably the way we want to think about it. So that, that essentially limits or, or shortens the distance between whatever we're separating from if we do that uh, by ordinary course of travel. So I, I would suggest we think about those two things and, and, and choose where with the setback we want to be. The second thing was a separation of caregiver retail stores. Uh, and, uh, caregiver retail stores, as adopted here, um, shall be at least three hundred feet from each other, as measured by the normal course of travel. Um, we had recommended, uh, to the council, they didn't adopt it, I think a thousand feet. So we looked at Lower Main Street and we said, well, that can have one or two. We wouldn't want more than that. Uh, and, um, because we were going to go slow and see how this works out. Um, so I, that, that, I think we want to reconsider that three hundred foot, uh, recommendation uh, for maybe to do me another thing, just again, to, to slow things down and, uh, and, uh, and go, go slow on the implementation of these kinds of facilities. Um, and storefront displays, I don't know that that's controversial. Uh, farther down, under, these are performance, uh, standards here, um, there was a order control, I think there was a, a, a conflict between what we intended and what was adopted. Because there was a, it said prepackaging of product shall be considered sufficient for order control purposes. And if prepackaging is proposed, then order control system is, shall not be provided. I, I, I don't think we should, that, that's in conflict with the previous thing, which is you got to have an order control system. Bags leak, stuff stinks, and you have to have an engineered, uh, uh, carbon system or whatever. So I, I, my, my, my strong feeling is that, uh, we, this requires uh, a system to be put together by an engineer. Where is it here? Uh, yeah, this, this last thing, uh, require a design of order control systems by a licensed mechanical engineer familiar with control marijuana related orders. And I think, I think that's what we have in fact required, and they've all had active carbon systems. Uh, and I think this ought to come out, because that's, that's, uh, in conflict with, with that requirement. This is again my, my thought. And the signage, uh, uh, language probably should be reviewed as well. Um, one forty twenty-six is the general South Berwick sign ordinance. Um, and I think what everybody understood was that, uh, uh, the, 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 the public signs, um, I'm not sure what the words are, but they don't advertise marijuana per se. Uh, people that have not had, wanted to have the marijuana leaf shown on signs or, um, or smoke or that kind of things. And we had a little controversy with, with one of these stores so far, which I get, I think they've addressed. So I think we might want to think about whether a strict, we are, are, are restrictions to that. Um, and some, and, uh, one of the interested public talked about licenses being transferable. Do they go with a property? And whether, uh, whether, uh, uh, someone can get the, get, get the store and then sell the store to someone who wasn't originally licensed. So there was that question as well. So those are the things that I noticed that I thought we ought to think about, and I'm open to these or other topics of being, being taken up. So
Bill?
Yes.
I'd like to see us, uh, just focus on them one at a time, just go down through them and let's see if we can't find a consensus on each one of them. I think, I think your, uh, presentation was was right on and there's no reason to, and then if there's some other, uh, points that some of the other board members
Yeah, okay.
I want, let's go ahead and focus on them also.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. Let's take some time to do that. Um, David Galbraith, are you ready to take notes? I presume so, so, okay. Uh, so definitions, uh, did anybody have anything that, that felt needed to be modified in the definition section? I thought, I thought it was fine. Under the performance standards, this is where the meat and potatoes is, I think. Um, uh, the first part of it uh, is, is them getting, uh, licensed. The second part is hours of operation. The, uh, caregiver stores are limited to the same hours of operation. Those were similar establishments within the zone. I think that's fine.
Hey, Bill?
Yes.
I'm sorry to jump back with the definitions. I just, with my, um, not understanding totally, uh, where it says marijuana. Uh, it just says as defined as means statute. Um, I, I spend a lot of time trying to look for that. Should, do we need to identify that to make it easier for ourselves?
Great idea. Let's, let's do that. Let's, uh, come on, where is it? I, that's, that's a great idea. I think we should, uh,
I know that the, I know that the, the definition for caregiver retail store was, is verbatim for what, what the state law has, but this one, it, it just
Expand, clarify.
And then I don't, I also don't know, um, where this is for caregiver. Um, do we, uh, this is just a question, no idea. Do we need to clarify that all the way through that we're not just talking about marijuana? But we're talking about only medical marijuana whenever we're talking about this ordinance? Because it, that's what I'm, you know, and maybe it's overkill. I'm just
No, it's not. That, that's absolutely not overkill. I think, I think that is a great comment. So we had to add medic, the medical medical to definitions. You're right. It's not there, is it?
I think, uh, Dave, we could probably wordsmith that for us.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that belongs there, and I, I think it belongs, uh, a more clarification of, of the definition of marijuana and medical marijuana uh, are, are absolutely, um,
It might be helpful down the road.
I think it is. Yeah, great. Thank you for that. Um, so back to performance standards, hours of operation, I thought, I, I, um, I don't think there's a, uh, glaring thing on that. So back to the separation from schools. The committee that looked at this, they looked at five hundred feet, they looked at a thousand feet, they looked at all these things and they had maps that assumed that the private schools stayed where they were and they didn't. Uh, um, my understanding when, when the planning board recommended this thing was that as I said, the whole business block through, through the, uh, uh, funeral home at the corner of Young and Main Street was to be excluded, uh, to allow walkers to the school and that, that actually captured the, the, the library uh, and, and all that. And, uh, um, so the whole sort of school campus there was, was excluded, including the businesses on Main Street. Um, are people in agreement that that should be modified from it is now?
I, I am. I think it ought to be modified to a thou- back to a thousand feet. I think the school, uh, we also ought to add the library in, and I think we ought to have it as a crow flies, not as
Yeah, if, 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 if we go to, uh, seven hundred or a thousand feet, uh, that encompasses the library. Are you looking at additional setback from the library? Because that, that wipes out all of Lower Main Street pretty much.
Well, I think this is why I think it's going to happen is, uh, you never know with a private school, a small private school, whether they're gonna
Yep.
uh, stay in to operation. I hope they do. My children went there.
Yeah.
Uh, but the school across the street from, I'm at the town office. Uh, I think probably in, in the future, that'll probably close and, uh, they'll go into a newer building. And when that happens, um, the library is something that's an anchor thing. I don't think that's going to change.
Yeah. Uh, I've heard no discussion about moving elementary school, but I mean, it could happen.
I'm talking about, uh, five, ten years from now.
Yeah, but there, there'd be some discussion of that. You'd hear, I, I haven't heard any discussion about that.
I, I haven't either, but, um, I grew up in North Berwick because that, uh, the school there turned into superintendent's office. Now it's gone into the town hall and the police station is, and this seems to be the way things go.
Well, then, then let's, uh, I, I'll, I'll ask, uh, I would ask, uh, uh, David. So we're going to have a modification. It'll be, uh, as the crow flies here, we ought to get, um, we ought to get, uh, uh, a town map out and look, look at what some of those radiuses are and make a decision next time on that. Based on your suggestions and whatnot. That's easy to do. And we can do that. Okay. Yes, David?
Can I, I just want to, uh, point of clarification. Um, geez, I can't even remember how long ago it was, but we did look at uh, the separation from schools as, at, at, at one point, we had talked about it, about separation from sensitive uses
Yep.
such as churches, synagogues, mosques, um, cemetery, some people, uh, have, but we had talked about, you know, parks, public parks and, um, and I think we we had looked at that at some point ago. I can, I can see if I could find the language that we've sort of played with.
Yeah, let's look at that, but, 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 but I think we need, we, at this point, we need to be specific with the map and, and really play with that.
Okay, you, you want the ones that are existing or proved identified on the map? I see what it would be at whatever three, fives, a thousand
Or seven hundred fifty, yeah.
Yeah, whatever. And I think, I think, um, uh, Joe, uh, may have some of those maps.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got the original maps from the committee that they drew up. And obviously, right now, the caregiver stores are only allowed in the B one, which is just the section of downtown where it is and the Lower Main Street and the I one, I two. So that's where the, that's what it is right now.
So, so we're, so if we look at the, 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 the separation from schools or libraries and, 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 and other things, I think we get a map in front of us, let's look at it and make sure it makes sense, not from a theoretical perspective. Um, I'll be honest, we, when, when, when we had to, uh, uh, approve the one next to the funeral home between Civil Consultants, the funeral home, I was upset because that, that wasn't the deal. And that's, that's right across from the post offices, right in the downtown block. To me, that wasn't what we agreed to, but that was just me.
I, I think a, a way to simplify this, Bill, is to, uh, your point is well-taken that, uh, by adding the library and that, that's, uh, too restrictive. Why don't we just go with this seven hundred, add the library and go with a seven hundred fifty feet and just call it a day?
Yeah, let, that, that might be it, but let's, let's do that with a map in front of us.
Okie dokie.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good. Um, C, separation from one store to another. Um, I think there's a general consensus that three hundred's too small.
Uh, you know, Bill, I, I don't think there is, and I'd like to see a map before we really have a discussion about it.
Okay.
Because we know, we've gotten to the point where basically, why don't we just ban it outright? I mean, you know, we're going to make it so, I, it's not like I want more stores either. Um, and I feel like this, this ordinance had already been a compromise and that we started with B one and B two and we decided B two was not appropriate or whatever it was. And then I don't think anybody's going to do one out in I one or I two, because it would be, it would take a tremendous amount of capital to build something because there aren't existing buildings. And so we're really left ourselves with Lower Main Street. And because it's so restrictive, we've ended up with now three stores and, uh, you know, I'm, I I'm not sure what to make of that. I'd really just like to see a map and see what we're left with.
This is the same thing. Yeah, that, that, I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
Um, um, uh, and, and I, I don't think anyone on the planning board was looking to ban it outright. Uh, I think, but the fe- the feeling of several people were that, let's do this, it's legal, it has, there's a purpose, but go slow and, 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 and ease ourselves into it. That, that, that was the thinking of not everybody, but of several people.
Right. And if you go with the, the lot lines, the library would be included in that thousand feet because it's not, it's only probably seven hundred a feet away from the lot line. Well, no, it isn't, because it's all part of one lot next to the school.
Right, right.
So it would encompass the library anyway.
Yeah, and the question is, is there a separate setback in the library? So
Correct.
So let, let's get the maps out and, 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 and make, uh, uh, some reasoned, uh, decisions on that. And, uh, okay, good.
Is, is there, is it within our, um, jurisdiction, um, to recommend or, or say that per capita, um, three is, is a good amount in that we do a, some sort of a lottery or something like that for when they come, if they don't keep up the, you know, the three that are currently in place. If we only allow three in, in the area when, um, I don't know, the only one that pops into my head is the name is the, the pied cow. If they decide, okay, we're done, we're going to hang up our hat and now we promote it, or we say, okay, this is up for bid, who want, who can, um, get their stuff in first, it's available, and now we're only dealing with three with these same rules. Is that a thing? Is it possible for us to do that? I don't know.
I, I've heard that it's not possible to limit the physical number, but I'm not sure that's true.
Right, and I, I thought I heard someone else was doing it and, 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 and it might be an answer for us. But it might also be a new way of trying to manage it. I don't know.
But, but the town attorney mentioned that, and I don't think we got clarification, though. I would love to find out if that's true, because that might simplify this whole process.
Right, by, by just choosing a number?
Yeah, if we are, we were told all along you weren't able to, and I think that led to some of these Yeah, if we are, we were told all along you weren't able to, and I think that led to some of these compromises. And if we could just pick a number, that might be a lot easier than. Worrying about, you know, setbacks and.
Yeah.
Although that's all fine, but. That's all fine, but the. The audience we have now presented problems and. As such as but with the way the crow flies and the footage, it wasn't what we thought we was getting. I still think things need to be clarified, even if we go to a number.
Well, let's find out whether you can limit the number. And and I think a quick phone call between David and Phil Sausier would solve that and then we can decide whether we want to keep it. With with setbacks and distances or some something else. My initial thought is that. We have this going. We have a rough idea where we want them to go. We have a rough idea where we don't want them to go. And so the setbacks might be easier way to do it, but if there's another way to do it, I'm all for it too. Okay. I made a long speech about odor control and and the suggestion that this prepackaging thing get get eliminated. Does anybody have any? Questions or disagreement with that?
Well, are we are we finding that's not working? Is there a place that has prepackaging and isn't using any other odor control? That's a problem.
Oh, the three that we've approved requires odor control. Active odor control.
Because they're doing more than prepackaging or they chose not to do it as a.
Shows not to disagree with us about the need for it.
Is it? Is it an expensive and onerous requirement?
No, it's not.
A system?
It's a little air handling system with a carbon filter.
I mean, are we talking? You know, one thousand dollars or we talking twenty thousand dollars?
Oh, closer to one. Yeah.
I'm in agreement with what you've got to say, Bill, just.
Does the, I mean, the thing is. Odors are very, very subjective and that is one of the. Across the country, odors from marijuana are things which can be objectionable to people. Some people. And I think we have a a the requirement to, because who knows whether. Somebody's only gonna have prepackaged products. Who knows whether the packages break? And you just don't have to have the the question after the fact. If you've got a active odor control system in there. So I I would I would suggest that we. I don't I don't remember quite how that got in there. Because later on, it says you gotta have the the board. Shall require the design of an odor control system by a licensed mechanical engineer. But but this would bypass that, so it doesn't make any sense.
We need a voter can.
No, no, we're good. We're gonna end up with a final draft here and I think if the consensus is this, that's that's fine for now. And and Hershey, the cost of these things are not a lot. It's like.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine by me. I hate I hate the smell, so it's fine by me.
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, some people have air purifiers in their living rooms, you know, they runs all the air. Kind of like that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, the operating plan, I thought that was rather complete. The security systems, I thought were rather complete. I don't I don't know. Suggest on that. Do we wanna have something in here specifically? Does does the state law? Have language about signs, David? Where you can't have marijuana leaf, you can't have, you know, smoke rings, you can't have. This or that, that this one's have to be somewhat generic, like people are not attracted. If they can read, they can they can they can they can know what it is, but it wouldn't be attracted to the marijuana aspects of the store.
I believe they do. I saw Joe nodding his head also.
That's a mistake. Okay, so I think we need to we should find that and reiterate it here. So it's very clear in our local ordinance that. That we can't have billboards for for marijuana plants.
I I think actually the ACLU weighed in on that. We're not allowed to do that. We're not actually allowed to regulate.
Content?
Yes. Which Abby has just mentioned as well, I might say, but I I am I am pretty sure that, yes.
That what?
Well, you can regulate it in regards, I think, to not appealing or marketing to minors.
Yeah.
But other than that, you can't really regulate certain types of content.
And just for any confusion, I hadn't found anything on the main. Dot gov site about signs, but I have seen labels. That has been clear about not appealing to people under the age of twenty one. And not depicting a human, animal, plant on the label. I haven't found anything about signs though. So and that's where I was getting confused. I'm like, there's a law on that, but it was more about the labels. So I'm not sure.
Labels on.
On the packaging.
Yeah, I think I think too, like the actual, the actual product can't like a gummy bear can't right, it can't be a gummy bear because of.
Sure.
Yeah.
The the ACLU does not represent my point of view and if you want what we can do, I can get. An organization that represents my point of view and then we can just go by what. My organization.
I'm just saying, I think this is settled law. I don't I don't think this is that. They are proposing it. I think that it's actually already come and gone in a court case. That said, you can't regulate content, but.
It's been my full understanding, unless it's been, I just had got it wrong. That. You couldn't have a sign for a medical marijuana store, for example, that. Glorified marijuana that had marijuana leaves that showed someone smoking marijuana that showed, I mean, I don't know what it is. I'm not sure what the restrictions are. But there are restrictions, I my understanding. And if and if there are. Do does it need to be more description than than what we have here now? Because. Because. What's misleading or deceptive marketing or marketing towards individuals under twenty one? I mean, what is that?
Well, you know, I think I think people realize it's like, you know, using animals or rainbows or things that appeal to kids to entice them into. Whether it's starting smoking or starting smoking marijuana, you know, or using other things. But, you know, I I'm not sure, like putting a marijuana leaf on a sign is, to me, that's like regulating a certain amount of content that I don't think we're allowed to do.
That we should find out.
Okay, we should, we should.
And I I was, I it's it, there's a link in the. In the chat as well, Dave, I don't know if you want to reference that. It's under title twenty two. Subsection twenty four, twenty nine addresses signs. Maybe all we need to do is just have that linked in our stuff, so it's referencing it. So we don't need to call it out. We might have a similar.
Yeah, that that was my thought. That was my thought. Rather than develop a language, if there is something in state law, main state law regarding this. Specific reference would be, I think maybe all is necessary.
Right.
And then just put a tag as amended, so as the state law updates the law. The local reg regulations also update.
But the it looking at the local one that just got posted, it it doesn't give you what you're looking for, Bill, or manly, just so you know. If you want to take a second to look at the, there's a link that Jessica added and you can go look at it, but it it aside from. Deceptive and false or misleading and, you know, not. Marketing to minors. And not market to people authorized to possess at that very last one. It doesn't say you can't have a marijuana leaf or it doesn't have any of that stuff, so.
Well, let's the I don't want to invent law here. I I thought there was there was more to it than than they might be, but let's be sure we understand that. I mean, if this is fine, that's fine, but. I again, as I've said, I I my understanding was there's more specific. Restrictions. Based on. On the on the on the product.
That's why I made my comment, because I I was thinking the same thing, Bill, and then I saw it on labels and I'm like, God, it didn't help what I was thinking at all, so.
I mean, the the pied cow with the smoke rings. I think Perry talked of them and they voluntarily changed that. I don't know if that's happened or not.
I know it's changed.
It was?
Yeah.
I mean, that that that's that's the kind of thing that we're talking, you know, how how does that? How are those smoke rings deceptive marketing?
Well, I think it was the cow, not the smoke rings. It was the cow. Cause you're using an animal to appeal to kids.
Actually, the cow had horns that looked like marijuana leaves too.
Sorry, I I'm missing it.
No, the O N P also spoke with them that that type of sign is not allowed.
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. How how is it not allowed? We need to have the reference that we understand how it's not allowed and 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 have have the language in here reflect that if we can.
Yeah, that would probably, if David was to call up there to the O N P, he probably could get that language.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we'll we'll pursue that, okay. We don't want anything illegal, but we want to. If it's already been worked out at the state level, we want to reproduce it here and so. I mean, if for example, a cow. And the smoke rings were not in accordance with state law. That's not, we don't even reference state law there and. And and the that's not misleading. Or deceptive marketing in of itself, so I just think it needs to be clarified. Okay. All right, good. Well, I got some marching orders on that. And I put this note down at the bottom. I can't remember who who raised this question with me. It was one of the interested public that. Do we have a whole? Do we have a? Someone, someone has to be a caregiver to get the license. To get the to apply for the permit. And then we give approval. And then they go to the town council to get the town to get the license, right? What happens if if that changes hands? Does the the new people have to be licensed or it does a license go with the? Owner or how how does that work?
It goes with the owner.
So if.
If you had a business and you wanted to sell it to Joe, for example, Joe would have to be licensed. With the state and local.
So it it so does the existing ordinance cover that? Is there anything that would need to be added there or is that okay?
Let me double check.
Yeah. Yeah, because I as long as long as it's not a. A hole. Okay, it's good progress. I think we'll we'll we need to come circle back to this and really make a final decision on 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 that. And we're probably pretty close. If we once we make a recommendation on that, we're pretty close to. With these other things, we pretty close to having something we can pass along to the council. Okay. Good, good work. Thanks, everybody. Okay, stop share. Here we go. There you go, everybody. So the second one had to do with the medical cultivation. And. What? I got from Phil Sausier. Was that he strongly recommended. That we define the use of medical cultivation, however we define it. And zone it. Because he is strongly recommending that if we don't do that, there's an open question about agricultural uses and this and that. That he's not certain our ordinance would hold up to. So. The recommendation is define the use, then you got it. And it is a defined use in our table A. And then zone it. In that. Defined use, if I understood him right. We have a fair amount of latitude is what we could do. Now, let me back up a bit. The medical cultivation, you have to be a registered caregiver to do that. And what we're talking about is someone coming in. And. Renting or leasing space in a much larger facility. Of individual. Registered caregivers, so each registered caregiver under the law can grow five hundred square feet of canopy. Someone would put together a facility here that would have. A number of them, perhaps large number of them. Doing it in a single building. And that that has, that is essentially what I guess has been proposed. That got dealt with with a moratorium and. Went to the Z B A and so forth. So it's not something else. It's not someone coming in and bypassing the medical marijuana statute. This is medical marijuana only. It's not. It's not adult or recreational, which. If Southburg does not opt in, we it's not here. There's a loophole for the medical marijuana cultivation. That caregivers can grow. And there's a loophole that caregivers can share facilities and grow.
Bill, can I just correct that? There's no, I don't think there's a loophole that they get to grow. They've been growing marijuana in town for ten years now.
Sure, okay. Well, I think. What happened, what happened was people, everybody thought. A few months ago that. A facility would have to be somehow approved by the town, otherwise it's not, it's not, okay, yeah. I mean, it's true, sure, people, I mean. So. And the question is, if we don't do that, then. Theoretically, they can, they first of all, they don't, they don't get, they don't get the site plan review. And they can go anywhere in town where a. Where agricultural use is allowed. That argument can be made for that and Phil Sasha thinks we might not win that if we took it to court. So. So, okay, so there's that. He also, I believe, and and he had several questions along this line, in defining the use. The the, you know, the medical cultivation, we can define. How big it is, how many, how many users can share a facility? Or. Whether it's a. So many square feet or ten times that. And I we have the ability, I think, to. To define that. In our in our ordinance as as we see fit. So it seems to me that. Those two things can work together. To. To limit the scope if we feel we should limit the scope of of these. Medical cultivation shared facilities. And I guess. Now, there are other there are other ways to do it. And there I think they're more complicated. And I've I've come to the conclusion that what the town council originally asked us to do, having talked to Phil Sausier, is probably the simplest way to. To deal to deal with this narrow question. But before we leap into that. I'd be glad to open it up for board discussion is is whether people are thinking there's some other way to do this that we we ought to pursue.
That was a great summary, Bill, and I think you're right on track.
Well, thank you, Hershey. I appreciate it.
Sure, Bill. It's nice when we agree, isn't it?
I like agreeing with you, Hershey. So, okay, all right, so let's go in that direction and see how it comes out. Cause there's other things you could, they're talking about licensing marijuana users, licensing caregivers, licensing home operations and all that stuff and. I think we could go that direction and some other towns have done that, but I just I just don't know what it did. We can accomplish that in timeframe that we're talking about and whether it really gets at what we want to do. So. With that.
Are you gonna post the ordinance that the has been, is the red U or is that the the town council marking?
I think it's me.
Okay.
And I did it this afternoon.
Okay.
So it's rough and dirty.
So you so you barely remember what you said, right? Cause that's about par for my course. Okay.
I tell you, all this stuff we've been dealing with has. I always, I used to think being on the planning board was pretty easy.
Or or boring, perhaps. I think would have been better word, but okay, not lately.
With everything, yeah, okay, I can share my screen here. There it is. Okay, is that showing up there?
Yes.
Okay, so I just took a half an hour and and went down. This is the ordinance that the that the that the. Town council sent to us that was generated by David and others. And we wait, we really need to. Focus on the definition, because this, what we're saying is we're gonna define a use. Once we define it, it's not anything else. It's only this. And then and we gotta think about what 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 it says and what it what it allows and what it limits. And early on, we talked about, this was proposed for the I one, the I two, we gotta will come, I think you need to come full circle of that is whether it's. All all I want or or something else. So my thought was. Is the question is. That this last red thing is that that's where if we wanted to, so someone could come in and propose a forty thousand square foot, really big item. That has, you know, eighty, ninety shared growers in it, a hundred shared growers in it. And 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 that's not out of the realm of of possibility. That's that's the kind of thing that has been proposed. And if we don't want that large scale. And if we don't want that large scale medical cultivation, this is where we would, we would, we would try to limit it. In the definition of, of the medical cultivation facility. That it, it, uh, it, it, that. Uh, it applies all facilities that share cultivation of two or more, so. Anytime you do two or more, you got to meet this regulation, or I think Betsy suggested. Two might not be the one, maybe it's, maybe it's three, maybe it's four, so that smaller groups can, can do things on their own property, and we, and we don't regulate those. So we regulate whatever we decide to regulate here.
An embarrassed to say as an architect, Bill, but can you point out a building in town that's 5,000 square feet that we could use for comparison?
I just wrote that down.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not trying to stick it to you, I just really am, I don't have that in my head what that looks like. Does that like it, you know, is that like the new building? With the coffee shop, is that like Bricksome Dance Works? Is it like one of the big places up on Fights, you know, Lane? Like the, the woodworking guy and the metal guy, is it, you know, is it one of the new storage areas?
That's exactly.
I would think it'd be something like the school. Like what? Going on 236 on the left. It's each level of the town hall.
Is each level that, you mean the footprint of the town hall is 5,000 square feet?
Right.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Perry. That is a great litmus, okay.
And I, 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 I just, I spitballed that. That has no reasoning to it. Um, uh, so we need to think about this and. Uh, whether we, now, a, a registered caregiver can grow 500 square feet of canopy, right? So 500 times five is 2,500 square feet. So I rounded that up for common area and, and got to 5,000 square feet, so again, these are just meaningless numbers, but I threw, threw them in for. Get, get the discussion going, and you know, do we want? If it was up to me personally. I, I wouldn't want. 25 shared things, that, that becomes an industrial uh, scale operation. Um, and if we're defining something for the convenience of legitimate. Uh, growers that want to get together to save money a little bit. Then there's, there's some number, I don't know what that is, whether it's, it's bigger or less than five. Uh, and that'll have a corresponding square footage. That's my thinking, and I'm happy to. Go another direction, but I, I think, I think that's what we want to do.
Yes, I, I agree, Bill, I didn't, and I have to say, I'm not clear on a magic number either, and I certainly don't want. Fifteen even.
Yeah.
Um, but I also think, you know, we, we're trying to put it in some place, something that's a compromise, but will also be a viable business model.
Right.
And so the question is, what is that number of, like, how many does it take and how much capital you need to actually build a factory building? It's gonna be, right, and I, I don't know if there's. That answer is out there somewhere or not, or if anyone's done that research yet, so.
On the other, on the hand, you know, there's, there's, there's. Without, without what we're doing here, there's no limit to what could happen, and um, and so. Uh, that, that's where we're at. So we need to come back to this. Let's, this, this, that, that is a spitball starting.
So. So when you're talking about the numbers. Uh, doesn't it take um? Each person within that pay a specific amount of money to get their license?
Yep. Uh. Uh, hang on, I don't know that. So if I'm a registered caregiver and I want to grow 500 square feet of canopy, I, I, I don't have, no, I don't have the license myself with anybody.
I'm talking about the larger ones. I thought there was a licensing uh, through the town that was.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. If someone wants to build one of these facilities, we, there is a license that would, that come from the town. But an individual caregiver, registered caregiver can grow. Up to the limit that you can grow individually with no license and no approvals required by the, other than the get, getting your registered caregiver. Card, whatever it is. So, so the, the town can't say you can't grow pot. You can grow pot if you're, if you're consistent with the, with, 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 with the state law.
Well, once we put this in. Um, let's say that the. If we want everyone to have to obtain that license. Uh, doesn't everybody have to do that, even the? The small uh.
They don't. A, a small individual operation right now can grow without any permission.
I'm not talking about right now, I'm talking about after we get through this process. Doesn't that?
Uh. As we are thinking about this, you'd have to have two or more working together to require a license. Or we can make it three or more. But it's, it's not, uh, uh. So, only if they are one of these defined facilities.
So you're saying the license goes with the facility, not with each individual caregiver?
Nicely put, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so um. The, the, this number going down to the uh. The actual definitions for performance standards and so forth. I think, okay, this number one, this says basically, and I agree with 100%, it says, in addition to. The requirements of this medical marijuana cultivation uh, thing, you have to meet all other elements of the zoning ordinance. That's how I read, is that right, David? It, it, that's, that's citing and, oh, uh, I'll get that to later, so I want, I want to just. Get, uh, cite the sections that the, or that's, that's a minor comment, you know, don't spend much time on that. And uh, so this very specifically says, if you want one of these facilities, you have to do a, a major site plan review with, with, with the planning board, so. You can't slip under the radar and everything associated with the facility. In addition to the specific marijuana things. Need to be um, uh, dealt with, like parking, like lighting, like noise, like stormwater management and all those things. Uh, so they have to. Uh, be a major site plan. Uh, that deals with the general site plan requirements plus the marijuana requirements. Okay, now, number eight, this second number eight. This is what we started talking about otherwise e- earlier tonight. Um, what, 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 what are the, what are the setbacks that are required, and I think. Uh, we probably ought to go to maps on that as well in the I one and perhaps I two. So we need to go to the maps for the. School property and see what it, what it takes to get across the. Uh, power lines or something. One of the things down there is we got the power lines splitting the I one lots. And. Um. It's occurred to me that if you, if you get to the other side of the power lines, there's a huge buffer there, a high quality buffer. Um, that, 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 it's not as though you got 500 feet of neighborhood to a, a facility, you got 500 feet across. Marsh and wetlands and, and power lines and, and then, so that, the quality of that buffer might be much higher, even at a lower, lower setback. I bet that, that occurred to me. But we got to come to grips with what that is here. Okay, and I had the rest of this. I thought was good. This is odor control plan. Engineered. Uh, security plan.
Hey, Bill, sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead. No, no, please, just keep going through it.
This G I, 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 uh, cleaned up some of the language here about the odor control design. S- s- keeping the same concept, but, but requiring that it be done so that there's no odors outside the building, and something like this. With a big building, a lot of plants, there is odor potential, no question in my mind. And so you really, you have to have active odor control and that, that's a major, major issue. We're not gonna want. Uh, uh, odors wafting off the site here. Uh, it's gonna be a disaster if you do.
I think there needs to be some type of um. Way of measuring that. I've got a friend that lives beside one of those facilities. And. The husband, it doesn't bother the wife. Uh, it bothers a lot, um, so I don't know if there are any. Ways, just like light, you measure it with a meter or something. I don't know if there are any ways.
It, it, that's a great question, Manley, and I. And, and I'm an engineer, a sanitary, environmental engineer, and I've dealt with. Uh, uh, odors from solid waste landfills. And I've spent a lot of time dealing with them, and what we're finding is exactly what you just described, is that people's perceptions are all over the place. What is, what is not noticeable to some person is terribly noticeable to somebody else. And the science of, 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 uh, of measuring molecules. That our odor i- i- is not well developed, and it's not like, oh, uh, noise which you can look at or, 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 uh, or, or light intensity which you can look at. It, I don't, I'm not sure that exists. Um, and so. Sorry. Yeah, we got, we got pretty strong language here that the, an engineer would have to certify that the mechanical HVAC equipment. Will prevent odors.
But without the uh. Ability to measure it, I think the way to uh. Handle that is to. Make the uh, systems. Um, from a small system to a lot. More intense type of a system.
Yeah, what I was talking, yeah, you're absolutely right. What I was talking about for the smaller shops. Uh, is, is not what we have. If you have a 5,000 or 10,000 square foot building, you're gonna have a, an air handling system. That goes through a, 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 a carbon filter and a backup carbon filter, so that every cubic foot of air exchange is directed. Through a, a, active odor, odor control system. So that, that, the, this would not be a, a small item like it would be for the storefronts. Okay. And. Then we, we had a big section in here on licensing, which uh, I think was, was not bad. So. I, from my, my thinking going into this meeting. We can, we can tweak some of the language, but I think the, what our, 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 our big. Job is to get the right definition and put the right controls on the sizing of, of that, along with choosing the right zone. So that's, that's my initial thought.
I think we've had a good discussion. Now, well, is there anything else that's gonna be on the agenda tonight?
No, so I think, I think we've given David some marching orders uh, for, for getting some information, and we can take up both these ordinances next time. And perhaps in one or two additional meetings, we can have our recommendations.
Hey, Bill, I'm sorry, it's my dog, and I'm gonna try to be brief, uh, because we just came home. Um, i- is there someone who's in, i- is there a place we can go to find out this information, or is there an expert out there who can help us with that?
Uh, the odor thing or?
No, no, the other thing, I think you're spot on, the um, like, is there an optimal size and number? Like, it, it seems to me, it's, it's a, it's a somewhat empty exercise to come up with a number that no one could actually afford. On the other hand, I think none of us really want a huge monstrous thing in town, and there must be a sweet spot, and I, I, you know, if it's not. If we don't hit it, then there might be a different way of thinking about this, and maybe we should do it, so.
Well. The life sort of gets to the, the community's wishes, I mean. It, it, the same thing that I was thinking about with the medical storefronts is that we want, want to allow it, but go slow. Uh, and is there a spot here where, you know, you can let someone do something and be creative? But we don't want it to overrun the town, and there, there are many people in town that don't want any of these, ever. But that's, that's, that's life. But we, we have to, we have to make the definition and zone it in order to control it. That, I, I've become very convinced of that.
No, no, I, I totally.
I, I think that um. There's two different. Measures that we're, we're using here. One is a smaller one, which is. The one or two, that's on one end of the spectrum. The other is uh, whether it's 15 or 20. But. We're not mandating that. It has to be 15 or 20. What we're saying is. At, we don't want it larger than the 15 or 20. Uh. In, in my view, as you well know, I'm not in favor of anything, but that's not what the town wants. Uh, therefore, my viewpoint is. Let's go for the money. Um, and in the licensing and.
Well, yeah, the, the, the trouble, I, I got that. The, the other side of that coin. Are the people who want this to be as small an operation and as imperceptible as, as possible, and there. A lot of people who I've talked to and corresponded with, that some of which are on this call and some of which are not. That would, would prefer that, that say, okay. If it, if it's not economically viable, so what? You know?
Well, I think, think by putting the, the two units, it definitely economically viable. You know, anybody can build a, a, a building that can um. So what it comes down to is on the other end, is it? Too big for this town, then the answer to that question of where is it gonna be located? And if it's in the industrial district that does not allow housing. Then, then I'm not sure that that's as much a current concern as if it was in a residential.
Well, th- this is a great discussion because uh, it'd be thinking about this, because. Th- that, that's what we're gonna have to come down to, a- a- and balancing these things and what we're trying to accomplish with this ordinance. That that's exactly what we need to struggle with to make some kind of recommendation. Okay. I'm exhausted. Um, I think we got a good start. I think we have uh, some questions to, that David can pursue and others can pursue in the meantime. And um. Um, um, I think we, we took, got a good start on both these tonight.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Well, I'll, I'll ask you to hold that motion to first see if there any, any member comments tonight before we do that. Anybody have anything they want to make a comment on that we've talked about or that we haven't talked about? Members, please. Board members.
I do.
Jeff.
Just wanted to, um. First of all, thanks, uh, thank Dave. Um, for the uh, feedback. Um. And I spent a lot of time trying to get those details, um, just digging in and. Um, just to get more educated, so I appreciate that. Um, I think that it was helpful. Um, so I, thank you. Um, and also just for um, the board as well, just to, to. To thank you guys for um, bearing with me and my questions as I'm trying to, to navigate and also try to do what I think. Seems right at times, so I, I think that I, even I get blindsided and, or just focus on things, and it's good to hear. From you guys too, so hopefully I was able to be that for you guys.
Yeah, thanks. A couple weeks ago, I, uh, none of this is easy for any of us, and uh, I, I, I appreciate everyone's earnest uh, wrestling with these issues.
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank you guys and uh. And uh, that's about it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anything else before I ask Manley to do it for real?
Well, we had a lady that seemed like she wanted to. Um. Say something. I'm not sure if there's room for her to say that. This evening or not.
I. Think we're past public comment, and I'll certainly entertain it next time, or if, if someone wants to do. We've been distributing every written comment we get to the group. And so there's, there's no, there's no withholding of that, but uh, where we're at tonight, I, I think, uh.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, yeah, I'll second it. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Good meeting, Bill, thank you.